I'm going to call to order the November 22nd, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Everel call?
Chair Simpson.
Here.
Vice Chair Griffin.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Reddick.
Here.
Commissioners Meyer and Walker are absent.
Thank you very much. We have this evening a consent agenda consisting of the October 25th Planning Commission minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review them? All right. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Council liaison announcements. Julia, you're sitting in the chair.
I don't know why that is. This was where my name tag was, so that's why I'm sitting here.
Oh, okay.
So I don't have any announcements.
No formal.
On behalf of the council liaison.
Sorry, I was about to dive into behind to get a pen. Otherwise I can't check mark what I've done already. So we will move right on to staff announcements. Before I call on our staff, I wanted to recognize Brad Kilby who has, I don't know how many more days left.
Three.
A week? Week. He's, not that he's counting. Brad has been an instrumental part of this staff in making me look a lot better when I have meetings and helping me out immensely both at the meetings and preparing for them. And I would like to thank him personally and then as a planning commission for all the work you've done to help City of Sherwood be more successful in what it's doing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, each and every one of you guys. It's a thankless job that you do up there and the community wouldn't be what it is today without you being up there. And I hope that you guys honestly feel that way when you leave this place. You know, each time you're making a decision, you're making a decision for the future of Sherwood, so.
Thank you. So, and I know that, did Kirsten make cupcakes in celebration of, so I say-
I'll make sure she gets the next two days off of that, after Wednesday.
Okay. So, I say thank you for moving on so we can enjoy some cupcakes. All right. That aside, would you like to make the official announcements for chair?
I have two announcements to make. Just a reminder that the Boards and Commissions Appreciation Dinner is scheduled for December 6th at 6:00 PM. It's a great spread. It's really awesome and we'd love for, the more commissioners that are there and represented it, the better, just because, you know, when the council sees that you're there, that you care enough to come out and also be a part of that and give them, provide them input at that dinner, because that's what you do. You get to talk about what your goals and aspirations are as a committee over the coming year, then I think it carries a lot more weight than if you weren't there. And we've had pretty good representation at the last three and I would really appreciate it if you guys could find it in your schedules to make it happen again this year. And then, just a quick update that on December 13th will be the next Planning Commission hearing and there are going to be two large processes or projects on there. One will be a townhome development right behind City Hall here. And it's called the Old Town Town Homes, I mean Oregon Street Town Homes. Is it 26 units? Do you remember?
I don't remember.
It's, it's the Jim Fisher site. So that's finally taking off and they're looking at live-work units and they're providing parking, which is not required in this part of Old Town. Well, it is, 65 percent, because that's considered cannery. And then the other one is the Hampton Inn hearing. That's the 72-room hotel located at the intersection of Highway 99 and Southwest Minneke. So you will have both of those hearings and I promise you there will be a full house here that night.
And you are going to be watching us from home on the TV?
I don't think I get channel 23 over there.
Really?
Oh yeah, I can look on YouTube.
YouTube, there you go. There you go.
And that concludes my announcements.
Okay. All right. Community comments. Community comments are limited to those items not already on the agenda for the evening. If anybody wishes to speak tonight either under community comments or testify during the hearing, we ask that you complete one of the blue cards in the back of the room and return it in to someone on this side of the room so they can be put on the agenda. And no one is racing to the front of the room to speak under community comments. So I'm going to move on to new business. First item is the Planning Commission report to council. This, has this been sent for the council packet already?
It has not. So tonight we were going to talk about it. It has not.
Okay.
We were going to talk about it tonight and just get your thoughts and then I can make edits and get it to Sylvia. You could also send me edits if you're more comfortable that way. But as a commission, you should at least talk and agree on-
As a commission, we should get a general consensus, because this is what I plan on attending as they usually call for the chair of each board or commission to speak. This is, these are going to be my talking points. If anybody has anything else they want to add, either email Brad or speak up tonight so that we can get it on, you know. He already makes me look very intelligent by all the stuffs he's written already, so. Anybody else have any additions, comments, concerns? All right. I guess not. I think we'll move forward with this document as is and then I'll-
We could maybe put some spaces between those paragraphs on the second page. I mean, if we're going to talk about making, just space out paragraphs a little bit like they are on the first page.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would be nice.
See, I was testing you.
That's it.
All righty. I'll use this as my very tantalizing speech for the Boards and Commission meeting.
You can improv.
What?
You can improv.
You've seen me. I improv without permission. All right. So now we are moving into SP 1607, the First Street Parking Lot, and I have a script that needs to be read. The public hearing on SP 16-07 slash CUP 16-01 First Street Parking Lot is now called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report, questions if any by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony and the time will be limited as follows. Applicant will have 30 minutes, that is split between presentation and rebuttal. Then persons in favor of the application have four minutes each. Persons opposed to the application have four minutes each. And the rebuttal from the applicant is the remainder of their 30 minutes. We will then close the public hearing and no other comments will be heard from the public or the applicant. There will be final comments by staff, questions of staff if any by the commission, and then discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the blue testimony forms and submit it to the Planning Commission Secretary. The chair will recognize people who wish to speak and any questions should be addressed through the chair. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record and make sure, is there a microphone there? I can't see.
Yes.
When you begin to testify, make sure that the green light is on and if it's not, hold it down for about three seconds until it turns green. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission will consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report. There are two copies of the staff report available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the City Council or Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. And the Planning Commission is the, will make a decision tonight. If it is appealed, then it is appealed to the City Council, but we are the final hearing authority for the initial decision. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Hearing none, I would ask, does any member of the audience wish to challenge any Planning Commission or members' ability to participate? Hearing none, we'll move to the planning staff's report. And I'm glad I moved because I have blue dots all over my eyes.
Excellent. I was just going to say, before we get started, the technical issue of your monitor's not working for this, you'll need to actually turn your chairs and see the screen behind you or you can come down off the dais during the report if you would rather do that. So, thank you Chairman Simpson and Commissioners. The matter before the Planning Commission this evening is a request for site plan and conditional use permit approval for a 19-space non-accessory public parking lot off First Street in Old Town. The subject site is comprised of two lots totaling 10,000 square feet on the northwest side of First Street, east of Pine Street. One lot is zoned retail-commercial and the other is zoned medium-density residential low. Both lots are subject to the Old Town Overlay District standards, the SMOC bill standards. The site is currently vacant and owned by the Sherwood Urban Renewal Agency, or URA. The URA Board is interested in developing the proposed parking lot to replace the city's temporary parking lot located on the former Robin Hood Theater site in anticipation of sale and redevelopment of that site in the future. The proposed site plan consists of 19 parking spaces, 17 standard spaces, one compact space, and one ADA accessible spot. A new 24-foot-wide commercial driveway is proposed to provide access to the site from First Street, and a 12-foot-wide secondary access is proposed to the public alley north of the site. The site features 10-foot-wide landscape setbacks on all sides and a 16.42-foot wide buffer on the western side of the site. An additional 855 square feet of landscaping is provided, consistent with the required parking lot landscaping standards. Two parking lot lights are proposed to light the site and help ensure public safety and security. The applicant proposes a five-foot-wide pedestrian access between the ADA accessible space and the public sidewalk. Code requires a six-foot-wide path for commercial developments. A condition is recommended to ensure compliance with this code provision. Bicycle parking is also proposed adjacent to the pedestrian access. A minimum of two bicycle parking spaces are required. It appears that there is adequate space to accommodate the required bicycle parking, however no detail was provided to confirm this, so a condition is recommended in the staff report and the PC memo that was distributed to your spot there to ensure compliance with this standard. The proposed landscape fan, plan, features four large trees of the Ginkgo biloba variety, two small trees, Pacific boxwoods, 44 shrubs, a combination of Brandon arborvita and Oregon grape, and 200 Graham cover plants, conicconic. The proposed species, size, and quantities are in compliance with the landscaping requirements. I'm going to review the required findings for site plan approval as discussed in the staff report. First, the proposed development is consistent with all applicable zoning and design standards, most of which were just discussed previously. The proposed use is a permitted outright in the retail-commercial zone and permitted with a conditional use permit in residential districts within the Old Town Overlay District. I'll discuss the conditional use permit component of the application later. Second, the proposed development can be adequately served by existing public facilities and services. Connection to water and storm sewer system are proposed. Additionally, the applicant will be required to relocate or dedicate an easement for the existing overhead electric that crosses the site. The site is owned by the URA. No covenants, agreements, or additional documents are required to ensure proper maintenance and management of the site. A public parking lot in and of itself does not generate traffic trips, rather it is intended to serve the existing and future traffic generating developments in the downtown area. Oh, I skipped one, sorry. There are no significant natural features on-site, so there is no protection warranted for that. There we go to the public parking and the generating of traffic trips. There are no buildings proposed, so design standards are not applicable. And you'll see I jumped to eight. Item finding number seven refers to industrial developments, which is not applicable to the site. Finally, there are no existing or planned driveways that exceed 24 feet in width, so there's no special consideration for that that is required. Moving on to the conditional use permit section. As discussed with the site plan, the site can be adequately served by existing facilities and the connections to water and storm sewer are proposed. Existing overhead utilities will be relocated or placed in an easement. The proposed development meets all applicable zoning standards, is incompatible with the budding land uses. Specifically, the Old Town Overlay requires a conditional use permit for non-accessory parking in residential districts. So the conditional use is for the half of the site that has the residential zoning. There are two conditions that must exist in order to be a conditional use permit. One is that no buildings as of May 1st, 2016 are on the site. The site has been vacant, as I mentioned earlier, since about 2000, late 2006. And that the site has direct access to an arterial collector status street. The site is adjacent to First Street and has direct primary access to First Street, which is a collector status road. The proposed facility meets the overall needs of the community. As previously discussed, the intent is to construct the facility prior to the sale of the former Robin Hood Theater site, which is owned by the city and is currently used as a temporary parking lot. The two sites are similar in size, 10,000 square feet. This new facility will be consistent with the code standards with a hard surface, parking space markings, wheel stops, site and perimeter landscaping, and bicycle parking, which are all features that do not currently exist on the temporary site on the former Robin Hood site. It also helps further the primary goal of the Sherwood Town Center Plan, which is to balance that future residential growth, economic development, and public investment in Sherwood. It specifically helps implement policy nine, which states that the city will support actions that provide sufficient parking for businesses and residents while maximizing the efficiency of parking areas. The fourth finding is that surrounding properties will not be adversely affected. Rather, the perimeter and site landscaping will enhance the site and the provision of public parking space will benefit all area properties. The proposed site is of adequate shape and size to accommodate the proposed use and has been designed to maximize the site for landscaping and parking. The proposed use will not result in any likely adverse impact to and does not pose a threat to sensitive wildlife species or the natural environment. The proposed use is not a wireless communication facility, nor a transportation facility or With that being said, based on a review of the applicant's submitted, the Sherwood Zoning and Community Development Code, agency comments, and findings effect in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the First Street Parking Lot Site Plan and Conditional Use Permit, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report and condition B5 in the Planning Commission memo distributed this evening. The applicant is here to answer any questions and staff is available to answer any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions of staff before we call up the applicant?
I have a question, I guess I can wait. Wait, are you coming back up as the applicant?
I am not the applicant, I'm staff. But the applicant is here and can come up and answer questions as the applicant.
Oh, I can wait, I'll just wait, I'll ask.
Okay.
Will the applicant be using the projector?
Not unless you need it.
No, and if you turn it off, then I won't be going, "Who's over there and what's that blue dot that's in front of my face?"
I think that, and that will not-
All right. I have no blue cards, so people unknown to me are approaching. Just kidding. Thank you. Neither do I, so that's all good.
So I'm going to be very brief, just because I think you're all very familiar with this site and what we're, what we're planning on doing. Just first off, a quick thank you to Keith Jones at HHPR for putting together an application that met all the needs and the Cities Engineering Department that kind of put together all the plans and obviously, you know, we try to file, follow our code as closely as we want other people to. So hopefully this is in good order. According to you, I think staff feels like it is, but ultimately it's, it's your decision. So really, you know, essentially, we're trying to build a parking lot to assist in some of the economic development and the long-term goals that have been identified for Old Town. It's not technically a part of the application, but just wanted to talk to you about the current state of the Robin Hood lot, because I'm sure you guys have questions about that. We have talked about that with URA Board here recently. The URA Board is not at a point where they want to bark at that property. They still want to do some more feasibility of what's going on there. I currently don't have anybody who's made offers or shown significant interest in that, so ultimately that property is going to have to be figured out what happens to it, but currently, there isn't anything that's imminent, imminently happening, even though I've heard some people in the community believe that there is, or there isn't anything that I know of, so. So with that said, really, it's pretty straightforward. Parking lot should meet all the code criteria and standards and look forward to any questions or comments you have.
All right. Russell, you have a question?
Well, the only question I had was on the, the interface between the parking lot and the gravel. You know, does the landscaping just bark dust and gravel starts or, you know, like the driveway, that smaller driveway, does it just, you know, cement just disappears into the gravel? What kind of a, how does it interface to the gravel?
I'm not sure, but I would assume there's a curb around that side.
I should have asked you.
Are we blinded?
Yeah, sorry.
Don't look directly at the light.
If you do look up there, it's a hard surface, so it's going to be, there's not going to be a gravel parking lot. It's going to be an improved surface.
No, no, I'm talking about the draw, the alley.
Oh, to the alley.
The interface between the, the site and the alley. I'm thinking about, I think about people, is, is that egress only or can people come in and out of that in the alleyway?
Oh, it bothers me that.
Let me, let me-
Takes a village.
It does.
Takes an engineer. Let's start off with the, the 12-foot-wide in egress ingress. That's basically, we wanted to have a point where people could access the alleyway. It's going to be paved, it'll be a hard surface. And I'm actually thinking we're going to do part of the alleyway too in a way of a, some sort of paved surface. We haven't got it for this because we weren't required to do it, but it would make sense to do some work out there. We've got to put a storm drain system out in the alley, so we're going to be chewing it up anyway. We got the water line system we have to relocate. So there's some stuff that we're going to be doing there. I would assume that we will extend the curb line around to embed that planter strip, so that, we'll keep it neat.
Yeah.
At least to the, to the end of the property line.
Okay. The other question I have about, is about lighting. So I noticed that, like if I were parking in the, on the left side, the space closest to Bellevia, that last spot, how, and I wanted to walk from there to Bellevia. Are those lights sufficient? Does anything bleed into the alleyway or is it only on the lot?
Only on the lot.
Is there another, is there a light on the street?
There is a light at the intersection of the alleyway to the pedestrian court, at the, at the alleyway and the street, yes. We were, we were trying to figure out, do we have to do anything around there, but we don't. It's got enough light down there.
Awesome. That's it.
Any other questions? I had one, which is had to do with the choice to have the, most of the landscape on the side closest to the commercial development versus the side that abuts the residential development. Was there a reason that there's more buffering on that side? Oh, good.
Yes. There is, there is a logical reason for that. The intent was to provide, to utilize the area efficiently, number one, and to set it up such that if any excess area outside what was necessary for the parking lot buffer and everything like that, that that lot could be sort of split up and given, you know, if, if the adjacent property owner wanted to buy it, that they could. This way, we're not chewing up the entire lot and, you know, basically utilizing area that, you know, doesn't need to be incorporated into it is, is excess. And we've set up the landscaping along that same configuration. If you look at the landscaping layout, it shows the trees and the arborvita on that side following the edge of that buffer too, with conicconic on the outside of it. So in the future, should, should anybody want to change something, convert it, you can do it. And it doesn't, doesn't change the parking lot or the requirements of the parking lot.
So a lot line adjustment to sell to the neighboring commercial property is feasible without redoing the entire wall?
Correct.
And the 10-foot buffer to the residential property is-
Is what's code, code standard.
Methr exceeds the code standards and you guys have a lot of landscaping in between the two.
Yes.
So the, Bob, the landscaping on the far left, then, that thin strip, that's extra, that's above, beyond what's required?
Correct.
Got it.
The 855-foot landscaping, is that, it, that's all the square footage that's there right now, so if you divide it off, how would you change the landscaping?
That was, that's what I just asked, so it's, is it excess or is it not required?
It's excess. It should be on. You can see there's three lines on that left side, so that first line represents the required 855 square feet of landscape, parking lot landscaping. So parking lot landscaping is based on the number of parking spaces and there's a ratio on how much has to be. So that first represents 855 feet of the required lands, parking lot landscaping. The next 10 feet is the required buffer to the adjacent property that's landscaping. And then there's that last line that represents 6.42 feet and that's sort of that excess property. And in the first set of plans, it was just left as like a gray area and staff said, "No, anything that's not developed needs to be landscaped," so it was resubmitted. And it shows landscaping there, but they have, as Bob had mentioned, situated the trees and the required landscaping in such a manner that if that 6.42 strip were sold to the adjacent property and redeveloped, it would not impact the required setbacks or landscaping of the parking lot.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Once the trees are-
Yes, but I, I'm not sure if that's what it says in the, that's not how I read it in the staff report.
I didn't either. I didn't catch that either at all, so I'm glad you explained it because-
But that's, that's the intent, is once we plant the trees, if they want to do anything with a lot line adjustment, you don't wipe out the trees, they're done.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any more questions of the applicant before we call on anybody else? All right.
Yeah, it's just that I, the plans that we received don't show that extra buffer strip on the far left-hand side and the trees and the bushes look like they're further over, but you explained it, I think that's fine. As much as I like 12-foot rose bushes, I'm kind of anxious to see those two big huge rose bushes that attack people walking on the sidewalk. Every time crews in, every time somebody gets taken out or their hat gets removed off their head by one of those huge bushes, can't say-
Looking forward to hearing you say "big."
Can't wait till it's-
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope. So we will, I have no other blue cards up here. So I just think she slides a little door in the front. Phew. All right. So I would ask if there's anybody that would like to testify in favor of the application or anybody that would like to testify opposed to the application or anybody that would like to come testify as a neutral speaker regarding the application. Seeing no one racing to the front to testify, I do have to ask if the applicant wants to rebut the lack of testimony. All right. Hearing, no one would desire to do that either. We will close the public hearing. All right. So we have any final comments by staff? I'm, I'm actually just looking for the spot that says how much landscaping, because it seems like they're providing more than 855 square feet, that's the minimum, but-
They are. And because they're not proposing to subdivide it yet, it's just in the future if it could, I didn't feel the need to address what could happen, but they just have that extra-
But that they have additional-
Space over there.
Okay. All right.
Need a motion?
Sure.
All right.
Need a motion?
Sure, I'm ready if you are. I think-
You ready?
I think we are.
Uh, all right. Uh, I move the Sherwood Planning Commission approve the application for SP 16 dash 07, the First Street Parking Lot. Based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received, and the analysis, findings, and conditions in the staff report, uh, with the aforementioned listed modifications, including memorandum B5.
Commissioner Griffin, that was a beautiful motion, but it didn't say CUP 16 01, and I imagine you meant to include that, I just wanted to clarify.
Is it 05 or 01?
It's 05.
Okay. Should I do that again?
Me as well.
I'll do it again.
Oh, sure, let's practice.
There we go. I move the Sherwood Planning Commission approve the application for SP 16 dash 07, uh, CUP 16 dash 05, First Street Parking Lot. Based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received, and the analysis findings and the conditions in the staff report, uh, including all the aforementioned modifications and memorandum B5.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second that we approve SP 16 07 and CUP 16 dash 05. Is there any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Good job. All right. And we now move into Planning Commissioner announcements and adjournments. So does anybody have any announcements?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Uh, I was planning on moving on to a new role. Citizens of Sherwood decided they didn't want me. I just, and, uh, in that case, I will just fade away, and tonight's my fade out for this committee. I've informed the mayor that I've resigned. This is my last meeting. I'd like to compliment Gene for a marvelous job as chairman. His body runs very efficiently, very smoothly, and I used to, I look forward to every meeting to, uh, scrivener notes and corrections. Russell does a fine job of keeping us in shape. It's time for new people, new blood. And Brad's leaving, so I'm leaving too.
All right. Brad, you cannot leave because we need to keep Commissioner Pearson.
No, 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 no. It's, it's time, time, the, the city of Sherwood has told me exactly what they think of my contributions. It's time to move on.
All right. Well, we appreciate all your hard work and your input to the commission.
It's been, it's been interesting. Of course, that's a Chinese curse, but, uh, it's been fun. You've done, people do an excellent job. I look forward to you continuing doing an excellent job and probably more efficiently without me. So, time to go.
Are there any other announcements before we adjourn to pep talks?
So I have an announcement. The SFA is going to venture off on doing two shows a year. As you may know, we do a musical in the park every summer. Well, we're now going to do our first play, uh, production in the Center for the Arts. It's going to be You Can't Take It With You. We just cast the, uh, show, 19, uh, cast members, um, and that's going to be in January, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th.
Oh, how exciting.
It's really cool, we're excited about it.
All right. Congratulations, that's very thrilling. All right. Hearing, having no other announcements, we will adjourn. Thank you.